All right, if you would like to join me, please stand for the Lord's Prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Father.
God in heaven. Allo be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thou wilt be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, power, glory forever and ever. Let thee be to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, rule call please. Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Moats?
Yes.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Yes. Do I have a motion to accept the agenda and the addendum? Do I have a second?
Oh, second.
Rule call. Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Yerdak?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Moats?
Yes.
Why are we accepting?
Yeah.
Well, it's accepted.
We should have cut it, yeah, but it's good.
Okay, we're gonna start with, uh, we'll just start off here with participation. We have, uh, Jaden Kobach. Jaden?
Hi.
Hi.
I think, I've seen that on tonight's agenda was open enrollment. So I have a question about that.
Yes.
Were all previous year's students given priority over any new applicants?
I'm gonna let Deb know.
As I say, there is a process to that. Um, and it's really handled in the building, at the building level, but it's, there's a policy. There's more to it than that, because attendance can be taken into account, discipline can be taken into account, but typically, yes. I know that's a roundabout answer, but that's, you know, about as close to what I can get to. What I can tell you is, we have, normally, we try to get as much open enrollment as we can, but we're close, I'd say thirty at this point this year that we've had to deny. You know, obviously not where we wanna be, but we've got a couple big grades, three big grades.
But if you're denying students that have been in the district since kindergarten, preschool, then why are kids that have never gone to Rolling Hills being accepted into these grades?
I can't, I can't speak to that. I don't, I don't know exactly what you're talking about.
I announced for the records, but I haven't received them yet.
So you're... Now, that's the treasurer's department, I'm sure.
Right.
I'm sure you'll get what, whatever you ask for.
Your, your question is, you got kids that, I guess...
That's a bruh.
I'm pretty sure the kids that live in the district automatically...
Uh, they get, they get initial priority.
They get initial priority.
But then there's additional things that can be brought. That's why I said, I can't give you a solid answer, but I can give you a rough idea, yeah. That's typically the case.
And we've got twenty-five to thirty kids that we've had to turn away because of the size. We just don't have the space.
Probably more, because we're still getting some.
That's really unfortunate where we're at.
Depending on grade.
Yeah. I mean, I understand. I'm just saying, it's like...
Oh, yeah, I'd say it is unfortunate.
So, correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong. The new school was built according to enrollment, because the state paid the majority of the money, so they...
Projection of enrollment.
They projected enrollment, to help answer your question. So they project enrollment, so they do class sizes of X amount. Well, we're way beyond that, is my understanding of this.
Yeah.
And so, we're in a pickle now. We want as many kids as we can get, trust me. We want, open enrollment pays us money, you know, to, and we're proud to have kids wanna come here from other districts. But, with that being said, we're up against it.
Yeah, in the past, we could hire teachers if we got enough, but we can't, we can't do that now with the new building came up.
And, and I understand that. Space is obviously an issue, but then why approve new kids? It's as simple as that. I mean, really, why were my kids denied and somebody else who's never gone to Medford wasn't approved?
Yeah, that, that I can't answer without anything in front of me, but, yeah. Um, if you put in a public record request, though, is that what you mean? If you put in a public record request? Yeah, we'll have something for you. You can get that too, or...
We'll have something to get it through, yeah.
Okay. I wish I could tell you more. I just, as president, I know we're in a situation. You filled us in the other day, or week ago, and it's like, I never thought we would be in this position this quick.
Shot up, yeah.
Yeah, I, I mean, I know people are talking, we're doing good things, and that's awesome. But then it's also, sitting here as a board member, it's sad that we can't just take, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
We're gonna be maxed out on a new building.
Right.
That nothing we can do about, before we ever get into it. And, uh, that's kind of the state of Ohio.
No, I've also heard that it's only gonna be a problem this year. I mean, that's hearsay this...
Well, moving up the grades, but yes, I mean, and we got a bunch of move-ins last year too, and that's kind of a transient thing. That could level back out midway through this year, you know what I mean?
According to what I've heard, third and fourth grades are the biggest problems.
Yeah, third and fourth, and there's a junior high one too, eighth.
Eighth.
Yeah.
It's, it's unfortunate, I, but I don't know.
It could level out, because we did, we got a ton of, a ton of move-ins last year, which is really the biggest thing that it's back, so.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, with that being said, excuse me, let's move on to, uh, grades K through five. Dawn and Shelley, Dawn? Shelley?
Shelley's over there.
Dawn's over there.
Yes. I don't care who goes first.
Go ahead. Okay. Looking at the new city here and our new rules, um, I finished out last, last year, going through supplies that we got going for this year. Um, the teachers, when they went through that OG training with Jenny Blatner, last late spring, early, or late winter, early spring, um, they put together a wish list, and then we were able to get a lot of those supplies. So I was getting them together and bundled up and ready to ship to them, um, when we come back next week, so I can start getting them in there before they actually, um, get into their classrooms, which I'm sure some of them have already been in there. Um, along with that, the, um, professional development that goes along with our series, we got that scheduled for the second day of school for all ELA staff, K five, which we're super excited about. Um, we did receive our homeless grant, which is pretty awesome from the state, and that'll help go towards helping those students that are, um, that meet that indicator on our, um, enrollment. Um, we are in the high school now, which has been, um, interesting. Um, Monday, I thought I was in Jurassic Park, because they, they were tearing down the walls to that corner. If you want to come out there, you really need to see it, because it is completely, well, it's starting to be built back up now, but, um, it was gone for a little bit. Um, the, the equipment was wild. Um, and then, if you haven't been in the high school, part of the cafeteria has now got a new space, which is pretty awesome. So you really need to come out and see even just that little bit. Our open house is the twelfth, um, so if you wanna just stop in and see that. Things probably won't be as pretty as they normally are, but I hope that we can have an open house in January to really showcase the pretty of the new building. Staffing, um, we have had some, some wild and crazy movement this summer, um, with the, the, um, thing with the treasurer's office that we had. So it allowed people to kind of shift around, which is always fun. I like change. I'm a crazy person, but I love change, so having new staff and, and new people in there, I always think that gives me new ideas and new, just, just makes everybody better. Um, so, pretty excited about it. Um, Dawn and I are gonna be splitting our time between all three buildings starting out the school year, so, um, we may look like we're a little, like, but it'll be fun. Um, I'm excited to get to know K two's staff better, so Tuesdays and Thursdays, if you're out, advise Will and Seacrest, I'm gonna be out there. And Tuesdays and Thursdays, I'll be at Brook. Really...
First and vice versa.
Yeah, exactly.
It's like, we're on first all the time, yeah.
So basically, we're working on our back-to-school nights, which are going to be hopefully, um, a very nice event for both Viceville and Seacrest. Viceville will be the fifth, from five-thirty to seven, and Seacrest will be the eighth, from five-thirty to seven. Bounce house, haircuts, um, just a lot of things for the kids to kind of get started on the right foot and get excited about coming back. So, we're really looking forward to this, I'm gonna call this a transitional year, because I feel like we've got a lot of starts and stops. We've got some firsts, and we have some farewells, which I think are gonna be hard for a lot of people. We have building farewells, and it's just going to be hard for those folks to walk away from Seacrest and Viceville, and a lot of them have been there many years. So, we're gonna try to, um, make sure we honor those buildings and honor the time that we spent there, and, um, make sure that the lasts are the best lasts they can have. So, um, I'm just really excited about what this year's gonna bring, and I know it's gonna be crazy, and I just, I'm looking forward to it. So, I hope everybody has a great rest of their summer, and let's get ready to go. Rules.
All right, we'll go to grades sixty-eight, JP.
So I was just telling you, the biggest problem we have in the district right now is knowing what building you're in, because we need something delivered to the middle school, like, boy, that's a bruh, so, um, once we get past that, we'll be okay. We did get the move completed and the, the more challenging part of unpacking, um, once you got over there. Uh, but I think we're all set in the Brook building, which is now the middle school. Uh, I wanna give props to the custodians over the summer. They got the building very clean, very quickly, because they knew the teachers are gonna need more time to set up this year than usual. Um, and we're set as far as schedules and all that kind of stuff, um, as far as the master schedule, and we're, we're ready to roll. Uh, our open house is the hour after Shelley's at Brook. Um, that way, families can hit both on campus at once, and they weren't conflicting. It's August twelfth, sixth to seventh. Uh, it's just, ours is really informal. We come into our building and meet staff, and, um, get ready for the, uh, the chaos of the first couple days of schooling, so.
All right, we'll go to grades nine through twelve, and Doug, please.
All right, uh, I remember what JP said. Uh, our custodians have done a wonderful job getting this building ready. Uh, it's been open. Most of the teachers have been in, trying to sort through, get things, what's still missing, and, uh, what they need, um, there at the middle school slash high school. With, uh, Mr. Jones moving up, we're still, are looking to hire the one spot. Had interviews this coming week, so hopefully have that all, uh, taken care of. Uh, freshman orientation, it's gonna be August eighth, um, six to eight, um, at the middle school. We're working, it's just...
Ready to go.
Yeah, it's...
All these open houses are gonna be posted on Facebook tonight.
They were today.
There are several questions about what buildings the open houses are gonna be in.
I think she rewrote it.
Okay, I haven't been on there.
Somebody sent me something, yeah, I think she rewrote it.
Yeah.
So checking for me if you can, and, yeah.
But, yeah.
It is, it's, it's chaos. Uh, Scott's not here.
I don't think she's...
She does.
I was calling on you. He didn't scratch it out, dude.
I did.
You were getting home.
Yes, listen, we can't forget the littles. We've gotta remember, we've got open house for our early learning center. It's where it all begins. It's right back here where Bingo is held. So if you know of anybody that doesn't have a preschool yet, or would love to come and just check out, um, our custodians and our team here has made it look even, just as the buildings look wonderful. So props to all of them that have worked hard to get those buildings open. We have some exciting new, uh, staff over there that we're excited to, that are not strangers to the district. So we're excited to see some of our young people going over and taking teaching staff, um, positions. But August fourteenth, five to six-thirty, um, if you don't have anything to do that night, please join us at the Early Learning Center. Second thing is, I've been working with the principals, uh, even though they've been off, but we've been, uh, planning some great back-to-school training that will occur for our support staff and our intervention teachers. CPI will be offered at the start of the year to get ourselves, um, educated and remind us how to best de-escalate and support students as they come back to the buildings. So we'll be offering that, the second day of training alongside with all the other great trainings that were gonna be offered. And last, but not least, but we got a grant from Kernsy County Board of DD that, uh, we will be, um, getting those supplies to our teams at each building, including preschool. They'll be getting their supplies the first to second week of school. Um, as they get in, we've got some great things that they've ordered last spring, that, uh, Board of DD, um, in conjunction with all the county schools, we will be having new supplies ordered, so excited to get that out and have the students enjoy that. And the principals and the staff did a great job selecting things, so thank you for that.
Very good. All right, we're gonna move over on to the treasurer's report, and then we'll turn it over to Brandon.
All right, I have approval of the minutes from the, uh, June twentieth meeting, approval of the June financial report. Um, we have some done-announced certificates. Um, we have our fiscal year twenty-five, our original minute certificate, and the corresponding appropriations. Um, really no significant changes from last year. Looks like it's a lot less, but just because the building projects made a lot of, uh, progress, and that's a big portion of our budget, and probably will be for the next couple of years. Item F is, uh, we're updating our breakfast and lunch prices. Uh, been working with the nutrition group, uh, especially Jocky on those. Um, and, uh, there's nothing really significant in terms of changes, and they're adding some items, so we had to update it, and then, you know, the calculations change from year to year, so just something we needed to do. And G is, um, just our routine, uh, transfers that, um, we make every year. First one, that's just the maintenance fund that OFCC requires. Anytime you build a new school, you have to do that for twenty-three years, since we didn't levy, or, since we don't have a levy, we just do transfers. Um, you know, the athletic and band support fund, uh, those basically cover the, uh, salaries and wages benefits for the extracurricular, and then the bond retirement. Um, that's something, like I said, they did two thousand and ten, and final payments due in December, so, um, we'll still get some use out of it, because, uh, a lot of that work was done at Brook, so, um, but still happy to see it, see it die right now, so. And, that's all I have.
All right, do we have a motion for items A through G?
Motion. You got it?
Rule call, please. Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Moats?
Yes.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Yerdak?
Yes.
All right, we'll move on to standing committees. Uh, we have Policy, Matt and Mike. Anything under Policy?
Nothing.
No? No. Athletic, we've got Mike and Brad.
Yep, just excited for football and volleyball, and with the sports started there.
Right. Uh, Mr. Dudley, how's the search for the girls' basketball pitch coming?
I believe he's pretty much done, but he's on, uh, vacation, so I think we'll have, I think we'll know something Monday. Yeah, he had a vacation planned before I hired him. So, he did a, uh, did a virtual interview from wherever he was at, but yeah, I think he plans on wrapping it up Monday.
Yeah, okay, 'cause I've got a couple, you know, questions.
Yeah, it's like, I, I understand.
Mike, anything under, uh, student achievement?
Uh, no.
Mid-East?
Uh, no, Mid-East, we're, we're still working on getting the, uh, the school, at Mid-East, we're still working on getting the, um, school bus, licensure to be able to test school bus drivers. Um, we did get a, uh, further large grant from several different people over there, uh, agencies and organizations, that's allowed us to, uh, improve the, uh, the CDC, uh, facility, so they're making good progress with that.
Very good. Uh, I know there's nothing personnel negotiations, insurance.
Nothing.
Uh, building and grounds, Darren? Anything I can say is, uh, some of the grass is gone along the road. Everybody was upset about, now we got a big ditch dug. But, it doesn't look as bad as the weeds and the grass.
No, no, they're digging into it now, that one, yeah.
Off, another subject, when is the first day of school?
The teachers is at twelve.
Twelve, well, students at fourteen, yeah. So we're just, what, three weeks out?
Yeah.
Wow. They'll have to have that entrance done then, right?
Yeah, they plan to.
I'm like, it's gonna be a mess, it, yeah, I'm not, it looks like there's a lot of work.
It's gonna be a mess. Five personal days, it's not...
I'm just glad I'm not in charge of that one.
We're gonna be putting out a...
We've been driving by, I'm looking, I'm like, boy, they better get on the move. That concrete, it'll be wet when we start riding buses on.
Yeah, me nervous a couple weeks ago, I would have been talking to you, so, no, don't be on our nerves.
But like I said, at least the grass is gone, so that's good. The weeds. Okay, uh, audit, nothing, community outreach, Darren, Matt? Don't let me down.
I'm just glad that the flyer has, like, the locations of the new buildings. That was great.
All of them were grabbing those today, and that, you know, was a great process, so that was very...
My mom mentioned, yeah, my mom mentioned getting something in a mound, she's, she really liked it, so.
Good, good. I haven't taken them around the businesses yet, because I've been all over the last two days, but they'll be out this week.
Okay, very good. Uh, business advisory?
Nothing, they're shut down for the year.
All right, we're gonna move over to supervisory reports, and I'm gonna turn it over to transportation and Mr. Jason May.
Yeah, I think one of the biggest issues we got going on right now is the naming of the schools. So I, when the parents are calling me now, we are just calling the schools as they are right now, like, they, the middle school was a bruh. You know what I mean? Like, that's the middle school, so I'm not, I know the mail is all coming to the bus garage, we're just, I'm being a mailman too. For when it's posted online, we're gonna post the routes next Friday, 'cause we're still getting, I'm getting calls right and left, and we're still getting, uh, new enrollments. So next Friday is the goal of it going online. Uh, but when the school is drop-off and pickup, that's been a question, some board members may, may get that. It's the same as it what, what it was the year before, the same spots at the schools. So it's gonna be out in front of the middle school, it'll be out in front of the high school, it'll be behind Brook, the same as it was last year, but just, you know...
And traffic flow is the same, even...
Traffic's flowing the same way.
Different students, different places, but the flow is the same.
The pickup is gonna be the same. Uh, the only difference when it comes to pickup will be the, no, it's the same, the high school will be picked up before the middle school. So, nothing's changed on that end, uh, except the names of the school. Where the middle school is gonna be, which it is now, that's getting, uh, we got, we got it coming down next week. Should be power washed, it's got a lot of green moss on it, a little bit too much for my, one of my, uh, grounds guys. We had to get a lift and everything, it was just a pain. So, um, we will start power washing the athletic complex Monday, uh, bleachers, you know, concession stand, press box, things like that, sidewalks, so we're gonna start cleaning that up. Uh, get the white truck out of there, it's been, I get bombarded sometimes with a little white truck. It had a purpose one time, I'm sure, uh, but we haven't had that much snow the last two winters. So I kept it just for that, to stay on campus, just to do Brook parking lot, but it's, it's time to go to the scrapyard. It's nothing left of it. Uh, we did take, uh, we took one vehicle to the scrapyard, kind of cleaned it up around the bus garage. We're a few buses shy right now. We've got three buses we, we took up to, uh, up north that are currently in Indianapolis. They said it'll be back for the first day of school. I'm saying they're not gonna be. So we'll be in some spares probably the first week, but, uh, they're getting air conditioning units put in. So, all the buses that we currently order from here on out will have air conditioning. It's seven thousand dollars more, uh, to add an air conditioning unit. It's like, it's a no-brainer. Shannon Dova, a lot of the school districts around us have already taken that route, so. Plus with the allergies some of these students have with the bees and stuff, and it's less likely than when it's gonna be open. We got four buses coming, uh, that'll be next year. We did a lease program, so by doing this lease program with them that was raining, uh, we're basically looking to save about a hundred thousand dollars in the four-year process, because each year the bus purchase have gone up about twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars, it seems like. So, we locked price in for four buses with this, uh, they'll be delivered next July. And like I said, we won't have to order anything for four years, but a few, and then I think two years after that, um, Johnny, you might be more aware than I am, but there's, uh, a clause coming, California emissions is kicking in with these, uh, diesels, and, uh, Hill International, who we purchased the buses. They're wanting us to kind of stay away from that first or second year purchase with all the...
There'll be a ton of trash.
A ton of bugs in it, so we're, this'll, this'll eliminate us from having any of those first two years on those, uh, on those lines.
Yeah, those first couple years on anything new are just always horrendous.
We have gone with all, uh, all the buses now, since last time I talked to you guys, uh, all have cameras on. That was through Grant, Bureau of Work and Comp, Brandon really stepped up on that and helped me out with that.
Thank you, Brandon.
Yeah, but anyway, I mean, that was a good grant. We're currently working on, uh, another grant right now through the same, you know, through Bureau of Work and Comp for Mark's radios. Every bus has to have a radio, and if they're down at Seacrest, I can't hear them. And, you know, a lot of people are like, ah, they can just pull off and use cellphone. Uh, it's, it's not the, not the greatest thing. And there's a lot of places in our district that does not have cellphone coverage, Dogtown, I mean, there's, there's a lot of places out there. So we got jammed up a couple times. We had a bus, the, on the interstate stuck last year. Um, I'm on the phone with Shannon Dova, uh, bus director, and he's communicating with their driver, and he's walking down with my driver on the interstate. It was just, so anyway, we're, we're getting Mark's radios. Uh, we're hoping to get that grant. If the grant doesn't cover it, then that's, that's a general fund, because we just gotta have it. Our repeater's down at Sunnyville, been down there for, since nineteen eighty-one, I think, and it's never been updated. So it's just, it's...
It's done.
It's done. And about, with all the money we'd have in that, everybody's going to Mark's, uh, rather than build your own system, the way the state has it. You know about the Mark's radios, it was just, it's the real deal. So it doesn't matter we're out in the state, they'll be able to communicate, they could be Indian Valley on an event, the drivers need to reach back here, they can reach back, so.
I think it's a good idea. I'll put you on the spot, but where are we at with the EPA giving us the free electric buses? Did that fall through?
We're still waiting.
Oh.
We're still waiting. When we've done all the paperwork, we have the two buses ready to be, to be crushed. We drove one bus last year just to be eligible for that grant. Uh, the Viceville bus was the oldest bus out there, and, uh...
It's wild, but I mean, it's free.
It's free, I mean, it's an electric bus.
And the charge, I went, yeah, we'll do nothing.
We can never afford, uh, to purchase an electric bus, because they're so, the cost is really incredible. And plus, the, I think, we'd have to take them to Michigan for them to be worked on, to really nobody locally. But if they're free, we'll take them. There's, there's, there's still, it's still an option.
Okay.
It's kind of, no news is good news on that.
I haven't heard anything in a long time. So in the snow, you're just gonna stop by the snow removal?
No, 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 we, no, we still have vehicles, but that white truck, I get calls all the time from people behind, there's a lot of people that wanna buy it.
Yeah.
So I'm like, nah, you know.
Yeah.
But it's nice, so it's what it is. I'm gonna make it up. Right now, the dirt's kind of got camouflaged a little bit, but it'll be gone before the first day.
We kept it for a snow removal, but it's not even safe for that anymore.
It's not. It's more of a farm use and...
Yeah.
To barn, to house kind of thing. It's not, shouldn't be on cars anymore.
Yeah, if you, if you'd sell it to somebody and somebody get hurt. Oh, absolutely, no. Absolutely.
It's gonna go to scrapyard.
Yeah.
But I'm thinking, you know, it's getting ready for day one.
People have no idea what you gotta get, go through to get the buses, and I mean, I, I got a ton of respect for you, because you don't get the kids to the school, it's a bad thing, so...
We're gonna do a little bit of hot patching there, uh, the week before school, so Seacrest, I mean, I know it's bad, but we're out of there in December, so I, for the last two years, we've gone down there and hot patched, and we've had assistance from a township that's come down and assisted us here, preschool, Viceville Elementary, so we're gonna go back and get some more hot patch and put some gloves on, but...
And I'm sure Mike's gonna be a big help, uh, you know, Mr. Yerdak.
Oh, yeah.
Yerdak, yeah, he's an asset, he's an asset.
Yeah, he'll be able to, be able to work with him and maybe take a little bit off your plate on some of that stuff too. That's what we...
That's the game plan, yeah.
That's kind of what we've talked about. Very good.
Just got nothing, so anybody's got questions about, like I said, next Friday, they're, they're gonna be, they're gonna be posted.
Just wanna thank you for your patience. I remember last year, you know, and, uh, crazy, but... Very good, we'll move over to food service, and Megan Matlock.
Hi, guys.
I was, I thought, I wonder if that's Megan? I'm sitting there trying to figure it out.
Yeah, my name's Kim Pathy. I'm the vice president of operations in Ohio for the nutrition group. I've been with nutrition for, I'm gonna date myself, twenty-three years. I started in Ohio at Edison Local, um, and I'm originally from Ohio, from Ridgeport. And I too have no clue on where I'm going in the buildings. I thought this was a support group for a second. So, but I do, I want, uh, our team to introduce themselves. One person that's missing tonight is Jackie. She's your regional manager. She actually had another board meeting, so we divided in conference, and I got offered to come here, because you guys are fun, and so, you know, it's... Um, but I'll have Megan and Cindy introduce themselves and just tell you a little bit about themselves, and then we can talk about the program.
Yeah, I'm Megan Matlock. Um, I've been in food service for many, many years, too many years. I live in Cambridge, about ten minutes north of Cambridge, um, so I'm pretty close, pretty local.
You, Cindy, don't have any experience, please. I don't even wanna hear.
Absolutely not. Call me.
She just fed us all.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For twenty years or so.
And I'm looking forward to working with everyone, bringing the experience to Rolling Hills.
We're excited about this. Brandon, you know, and Deb, they spent a lot of time on this, and it was a, for, to say at least a little controversial, to, to take a step like this, but, you know, uh, the bottom line is, we want the best for the kids, you know? And we also have to look at the bottom dollar on everything, you know? That's what the board's here for. But, uh, I say this guy's one, and Matt's been, I'm excited, he's been a lot in, in the food industry, you know, we kind of count on Matt a lot too for some of this kind of stuff, you know, so, we'll, uh, we'll look forward to it.
We're really excited, the girls have met with the staff already and it was super positive. Um, they really seem to be excited about some of the changes. And you know, more of it's will come with this change in the buildings, but like right now, we're looking to figure out where we can put the salad bar back in. We're trying to figure out space.
There's gonna be a salad bar?
So we're hoping, Jackie and I and the girls, we're gonna get together and brainstorm on where in that little space, how we're gonna make it work.
So are board members allowed to come? You got a salad bar on?
We need you to come in.
There are no salad bars anymore, guys, remember how everybody had a salad bar? Wendy's had a salad bar?
I know.
Lisa's laughing, but. Yeah.
They expect you to come in, but they're still gonna charge you.
Well, I, I, I gotta bring my low sodium, I gotta bring my low sodium dressing, but I, I'll come for it, so.
We need low sodium dressing, we'll get it.
I've got some pretty good stuff, but I'm willing to try others too.
We, um, you know, with the requirements now, I would say our dressing probably already is low sodium, so that we meet all the requirements.
I bet you do go through a lot of requirements, but.
There's a lot of things, and, and you know, with the kids now, just talking about the allergies, you know, we'll cater to those kids. So with your gluten freeze or any allergies they have, we'll work with the nurses and the parents to make sure that their meals are as close to what everybody else gets. Cause that's important, nobody wants to be singled out. Um, we're gonna teach the girls to make pizza right away, cause we make pizza from scratch. Uh, we rise, self-rising dough and then they grate in it and put the toppings all on it. Our sauce is prepared with spices, it's not just in a can.
So what, our insurance premiums are gonna go up, so.
It's gonna be good, I'm telling you.
Pizza!
Yeah, we're gonna do a training here this year with the girls. Um, but next year our plan would be, we bring all the school districts together and they're actually at Mid East. Um, the first Friday in August. Our goal next year would be to take them, because it's nice for them to meet cooks in other districts and kinda brainstorm. We, you know, we just celebrate them a little bit too, because if they're happy, things go a lot better. So we wanna work on those relationships with them as well.
Is it gonna be green beans? If we got salad bar and green beans.
Yeah, the girls, they brought you some parfait's tonight as well. And you know, the other thing I wanted to let you guys know is that when we took our tour of the district, one of the things that we've heard several times was how much everyone really liked Katie as a person. And that they just felt, you know, maybe she just needed some more training in other directions. So we actually hired Katie. Uh, so she's, she's with us now and she's, uh, in her, we put her in our training program. We usually train directors for about three months. Um, she's not far, she's at Noble. So, uh, she's pretty happy and that's Jackie's with her there, so they did Noble, uh, getting her all set.
I'm glad, I didn't know that, yeah, that was a very, yeah.
That was tough.
That was tough as work, you know, cause we knew we were losing a position, you know? So good, that's really good.
Yeah, so we, we expect great things, she seems pretty happy. Um, she had a great interview, so we're just excited and looking for the, looking towards the future.
That's very good, I had no idea. Good, that's good.
Do you guys have any questions?
Yeah, could you talk maybe about like what the difference in the menu type would be versus maybe what we were traditionally before? Like, I think that's why I made you some wondering.
And I think the hardest thing is when you're a self-off district, you know, a lot of times it's, we create the menus to pass the review. To where we actually have dieticians, corporate chefs that are out there preparing recipes so that you can still have a nice variety of, of options for the kids and still pass. So where you might have had one option in an elementary in the past, our goal would be to have four options for the little ones. Like a salad, some sandwiches, and then the hot entree as well. Um, the other at the high school, I mean, normally in one of our high schools, we can have up to fifteen options every day for the kids. We do pizza every day, you know, we have a variety of sandwiches every day. But we all still have those, you know, um, stick to your ribs meals as well. You know, mashed potato bowls, all that kinda fun stuff that the kids like, that they're used to getting at home.
Or they don't get it home, and that's why they're important.
Yeah, yeah. The, the other thing that we're gonna hop right on is making sure that the applications get out. That we're doing things like at your open houses to get people to fill out the applications. Um, you know, that was a big thing that Brandon had talked to us about, how important that was to the district. And we agree, because, you know, you wanna make sure kids are getting those benefits. And we know as they get older, we get less applications from the high school kids, because they don't bring the paper home. Mom and dad sometimes check out with you, you know, get older. Um, but for the most part, we do what we can, whatever we can do to help that process along, cause it's so important that they're taken care of. As far as, um, working with the staff, uh, I know they're unionized staff, the majority of our staffs are unionized. Just to give you guys a little bit of background about me, um, my husband's a, a business agent for a union and three of my four kids are in unions. So I come from the background that, um, I understand both sides. I've negotiated contracts for nutrition, because in some accounts, there are employees, so we negotiate that. But I also understand the other side as well, so I have a union person to don't think of. Um, but with that said, you guys have a contract, we're gonna follow it. You know, if there's something that's not working in there, that should be worked out during negotiation. That's not from our side, we can't do it this way. So we're gonna follow it, we'll bring it back to you guys if they're concerned. The other thing is, we hope to work closely with their union reps. So before we get to the point where there is an issue, if we have a question, we'd like to bounce it off of them first and have that relationship.
We got a couple of union members here and they're pretty good, so we'll.
Very good, okay, and that's great.
Yeah, no, we, we do have good relationship.
Yeah, my having a vice presidents in the kitchen.
Okay, that's great, yeah, so that's good, that's.
I don't see many issues there, and I, like I said, the food sounds like it's gonna be exceptional for the kids.
Do we, like, just because we'll have open houses, questions will be coming up. I know, uh, Mrs. Black's here and she works with kids and maybe have different dietary, you know what I mean? Like, I don't know, yeah, I don't know how to word that, but do we have an example of what, like, maybe our first week at elementary school and high school or junior high would look like? So maybe, you know, we could get the word out, like, these are the new options now, so parents can, you know, I would assume, start planning early and not have to get used to packing lunch, you know? Because they have a heads up in advance of what this new structure would look like.
Twenty percent, yeah, and we actually plan to be at the open houses, I'm sure Jackie and Megan's already working on the schedule for that. And our goal would be to set up some sample trays so that the parents can see. Cause one of the biggest issues is, a child will go home and say, oh, I had was a sandwich today. They don't realize they can take five items, up to five items. Um, so I think it's important that we let the parents know breakfast, what breakfast trays look like. We'll have, um, menus ready to go, we'll be there as well to answer any questions. A lot of districts, we set the whole lineup and do samples. Right now, we're just trying to work through, um, the food pieces, because we had, uh, a freezer, some freezers with the power on and off. We had some issues, um, so we're gonna have to get rid of some of the food. And I'm not sure if we'll have it all in by that time, cause we try to get it as close to, um, the start of school as we can. So, but we will have menus, we'll have sample trays and all that.
Okay, just one quick question, I'm sorry, I know I'm.
And you can come in.
I'm gonna come and try, especially.
As, as a parent, you know, I'm gonna be trying to sell to my kids that I don't wanna pack a lunch every night. So you know what I mean? Like, I'm hoping that you have, you know, beautiful looking options in there, you know? Cause I, that saves me as a parent, I don't wanna pack a lunch every night, I'd much rather.
That's the goal with this, hopefully nobody does now. With so many options, it sounds like there's something somebody's gonna like to eat.
So I'm excited.
Do they have ice cream?
What can I like? Pizza, a kid will eat pizza every day.
But it's a smart snack approved, so it's a requirement. Usually the elementary principals come to us after about the first three days and say, if I see ice cream every day, can we just have it on Fridays? That's a conversation that we'll have with you guys on what that looks like. Because ultimately, we wanna make sure the principals are happy too, and we'll work through any concerns that they have with what goes out there. You know, when the kids get their snacks, all those little things that, because sometimes the kids will eat the snack and not eat lunch, so they want them to come at the end, so we try to work through all of that. You know, and this year's gonna be a learning year, with the buildings being different.
It's gonna be a challenge.
Yeah, and so we, when we reopen with the changes in January, we're not gonna go, we'll have some signage in that right now. But that would be the big grand opening. And our goal is the food sells the program. It's not the shiny things that are sitting on the shelves or the, on decorations, it's the food. And that's really our goal. And the staff is, seems excited, they're ready to bring some things back and.
Well, you guys remember when we, the pizza days and stuff, you didn't miss school on Pete, remember? You know, it was like, we're friends, you know, yeah, hamburger gravy was always one of my favorites, you know? I didn't, I don't know what's in schools now. A lot of foods were my favorite. Do they still have milk breaks, is, are there still milk breaks?
Do they, they might at kindergarten and some.
I wonder, no milk breaks?
Not in my building.
Remember milk breaks?
That was when.
Actually, only eight years ago, but there was. There were milk breaks, I remember. It was like six cents and you got a, they serve milk. I didn't know what they do anymore, but it's, it's gonna be interesting, I'm sure it's, I gotta applaud these two guys for, for taking the steps to, to. This, like I said, it was a big move and, and, you guys, yeah, it is exciting.
It is exciting, y'all.
Yeah, good job.
Well, we're thrilled to be here, we're excited and, uh, you know, the, um, I had to go buy an orange purse.
Yeah, there you go, yeah, don't carry a blue one around. Yeah, Lisa signed her blue, white blue purse, that's light blue, you're okay, it's light.
My kids aren't, as long as it's not really a blue, you're all right.
But hopefully, you know, teachers, administrators, everybody, you know, might not have to leave the facility for a good meal now, you know?
Absolutely.
I'm not saying it wasn't good before.
Right.
I don't know anything about it, but this sounds like a ton of options.
At that Mid East, and they've been already like saying, singing the praises, cause we kinda heard about it to begin with.
Everybody I call.
So you, teachers, administrators, everybody's excited about this.
Well, we're meeting you guys, I believe on, do you remember the twelve?
The twelve.
We're meeting you guys on the twelve. I'll tell you, uh, Jackie, that's your regional manager, she used to be a food service director for me when I was in Pennsylvania. And Jackie is over the top on special functions, so get ready, so you come eat that.
Mike will be there.
I'll be there. Are you paying? We're, I'm counting the earplugs. The school's earplugs.
I know, I bet that's cool, man.
Darren, seven years and we've, we ever got anything in this? No wings, Lisa was getting the other day, no wings, he used to come to board meetings, there was B W wings and stuff.
I've only been at George. But you're right, I'm cheap.
I like fruit.
Fruit, good, thank you, Mike.
Very good, that's, that's exciting news.
And the girls left a catering menu in there too, so, you know, our goal would be that we can cover all that. And just so you guys know, we don't make money off of that, the district does. With the way the contract's set up, the only thing we make is our management and fee, and then our admin fee goes to pay costs. So any additional money you make selling out a card, teachers using the catering, just goes back to the district, so.
So if we're like advanced, maybe feed the team, do they still have feed the team?
They do some of that, yeah.
Yeah, but if they were getting a pickle right, and you'd have options.
So as a parent, can I call in and say, I forgot to send cookies to my kids' birthday?
Cookie cakes.
Or whatever.
Yeah.
We can do cookie cakes that are decorated.
That might be a good option to put out there, because with all the peanut butter allergies, we usually say, ask for something packaged. So we can read the.
Well, as a parent, you go and you go, what do I like?
Yeah, right, right.
I'm glad we ate dinner before we came to meet.
Yeah, so we can take care of all that for you and we'll get those out so that the parents know. But I know myself, I would have absolutely jumped on that.
Wouldn't it be neat when we were, as much as we can get out to the parents and everybody, yeah.
Actually, we need to get them on the social media people, yeah.
Yeah, and we'll have our own little social media site for you guys too, we do a lot of Instagram, we have somebody that does TikTok for us and, um, different things like that. So we'll be putting out pictures as well. But if you guys have a Facebook page or your district website, if you would like Megan and Cindy to share pictures with you of what's going on.
I've got a, I've got an email address, you can send it to their communication people, put it out.
Yeah, that would be great.
I'll get with them. Whoever's in charge of. I'll get with them.
Thank you guys so much.
Well, thank you, that's very good, that's very good news, I'm excited. All right, we'll move on then to old business, uh, you wanna handle this, you want me to read it?
Oh, I can, these are just adjustments, I believe, right, Brandon?
Yeah, I think, um, Jennifer Miller, I think lady got more transcripts and realized she was on a master plus thirty. Mike Yurko, we started him a little bit earlier than we were going to, that was for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, we got him in place right at Christmas time. So that's just adjusting his contract by ten days.
Yep, adjusting the contract and the salary, so.
Do I have a motion for old business?
I'll move.
Second. There's.
Roll call.
All right, uh, Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Moots?
Yes.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Yurda?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
All right, Devin, superintendent's report.
Well, I promised to be quick tonight, but I do have to break these up, so bear with me. Uh, we got obviously some hires, Todd Bates is back on the retire, rehire scale after we jumped around with all of that for the last three months. Uh, you'll also notice Tracy Jackson effectively works for the district after tonight, assuming you vote for it. Uh, B had a couple resignations, um, Kat Carpenter, I'm not sure where she went, I mean, got to talk to her, it was kind of a surprise. Kelsey Eubanks is resigning from this position to take another position in the preschool, so, yeah, so she's not actually going anywhere, it's just a change of position. Uh, C agreement, that's for the turn lane, that's the easement agreement for the turn lane. Uh, D is a character ed and career planning, uh, program we're putting in. Marcy Murphy has been, she's kind of a big wig in this already, so that was part of the hiring, is I wanted to do something like this and she's pretty high up in this group, so she's bringing in some ideas and that's, that's kinda what you're approving there. Uh, E approved MOU with Washington State and F is with Kent State for CCP stuff. And G approved resolution for the curriculum director regarding S T R S fringe benefit pickup. So that's where I'm gonna stop for now, so I'm gonna pull H out, so A through G, please.
Hmm, do I have a motion for A through G?
Motion. I'll say. Roll call.
All right, uh, Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Yurda?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Bates?
Yes.
Okay, this part you may, H you may remember from previous years, we have to appoint a board member as a delegate and an alternate for the OSBA annual business meeting. You don't actually have to go, but we have to appoint somebody.
It was on our list.
Lomani.
Dick Matt did it.
Matt did it, Brad?
Good, all right, so I'd like to appoint Brad Dudley as the delegate, I need an alternate.
Members.
I can put you guys out afterwards and discuss some more. Words for me, Brad Dudley members.
Very good, thanks, guys.
I need a recommendation.
Uh.
Or a motion.
Motion, do I have a motion for item H?
I'll move.
Second.
Roll call.
All right, Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Moots?
Yes.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Yurda?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you. Um, I approve the following handbooks, we're gonna have to make some adjustments as we go because of how administrative hiring went into the summer, but that's kind of the foundation there. Um, but, yeah, we wanna get something in place to start of the year and then we can make adjustments as we go.
Has John been involved, has he looked through the studio?
He's looked through, but he really hasn't had time to rewrite it.
Okay, cause I, I would like to see him be involved with what he has in mind for that.
Yeah, that's his baby.
Yeah.
Um, well, and then Marcy was working on the high school handbook, but she took her parents on a cruise to Alaska and paid to get the internet service and something happened that wasn't working, I said, just submit it for now and, you know, when you get back, you can fix it for next month. Um, J approved open enrollment list, K approved the reduction on force, we discussed earlier for the food service director. L approved contract Owen Williams to be our new district sports photographer. Um, he is excited, uh, Caleb Graham moved his business to Nashville. So this is a change of course for us, first time in a long time, but Owen's fantastic and he'll do a nice job for us.
Is he a Lomani?
No.
No? His kids go to. He's, he, yeah, he works over locations.
Yeah.
Mid East, yeah.
Good, he's, yeah, yeah.
And he's helped us a lot with the graphics stuff, he makes our little sport schedules and everything.
I recommend transfer and power plant scholarship, one-year payment to the FAO matching scholarship fund, so we get, this was the first year we got the scholarship payment from the power plant. I was approached by groups of the, a group associated with the Rolling Hills Scholarship Fund, where they take all that, they put it into an FAO account, it grows, and then they match all of the local scholarships our kids get, and they asked if I would be willing to put that in there. So, you know, instead of giving one ten thousand dollar scholarship to one kid, we can give it to a lot of kids, however many years, so that's why I'm asking to do that. It's been great already, but the more they can get into it, the more kids they can have.
While we're on the power plant, have they, is the funding been coming in, like, you haven't had issues?
Yeah, we're all caught up.
Because it was a mess there for a while.
But the second year of our, the compensation agreement, the first year for the scholarship, which is spot on, I thought it should be, we have a good contact now.
Yeah, it's kind of stabilized, because we got contact.
It's the year we find out about the transmission taxes.
Yes, we will, because I just asked somebody about that the other day, yeah, right. That's the. The excise tax.
High Department of Taxation, so.
Yeah, okay. I don't know what the result of that's gonna be, but we'll find that.
I'll be a little interrupted.
I am, too. N, approve updates, the administrative agreement is presented. O, the buyback quote, that's selling old iPads and MacBooks that, you know, we can't use anymore, per state programming, but somebody, an individual could, so we sell them back to a company that's in repurchases of them. And P, approve the site manager memorandum between Rolling Hills and our HEA. So, I through P, please initiate any questions.
Motion.
Do I have a second?
No, second.
Roll call.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Motes?
Yes.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Yurda?
Yes.
I told you I'd be quick, and I don't even have any new business or correspondence.
And we don't need an executive session.
We're not going to an executive session, so do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Motes?
Yes.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Yurda?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Next board meeting, August fifteenth at six P M. Thank you very much.
And thank you, guys, for working on changing the.